Okay. I'd like to call a meeting to order at 7:01. Stephanie, where are you? There you are. Hi. Call attendance, please.
Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
She's absent tonight. She's absent. Lisa Roush.
Here.
Michael Sinatra.
Here.
Julie Stewart.
Here.
Peter Tagley. That gives us quorum.
Thank you.
Is that how John spells his name? Is that correct? John, is that how you spell your name?
That was a whole lot of vowels.
B U O.
Oh, okay.
Oh, B U O.
I was going to switch it. B U O.
Good catch.
But you said it perfectly. It was a spelling.
All right. So we'll move to the next agenda item. Opportunity for the public to comment. Do I have Mr. Wayne Wright? Welcome. You know the drill, please, sir? Thank you.
Ed Wayne Wright from Bridgewater. I left a copy of what I'm going to say. It's brief. It consists of a couple of facts, some opinions, and probably last the question. Connecticut is not in good fiscal shape. And that was true last year. The next two years, Connecticut is facing an estimated budget deficit of $5.1 billion. This is where the opinion is. In my opinion is, it was unwise to spend $1.8 million on AgSTEM for shovel-ready without a firm commitment from the Connecticut bonding commitment. It might be prudent to investigate less aggressive alternatives. In 2013, repairing the science labs was estimated at $1.5 million by the same architect that you currently employ and include all the hazardous waste and so forth. Without science labs upgrades to the Chapag, without science lab upgrades to the Chapag High School, I think the question is, could the Chapag High School lose accreditation? I don't know the answer to that. That's my statement.
Thank you very much. Okay. Moving to item number C, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I don't think you need a motion. The question is, does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? If not, then the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do I, anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing no one, it's approved. Item, the next item, reports and recognition. I will go first as a chair. I will share some comments that I made earlier, it seems like almost a month ago, but just probably shorter than that, to the administration when Pat kicked off the year with her team. I could sum it up in, I'd say this year is going to be a very pivotal year for the district while we sit waiting for Hartford to declare our future. What do we do in response to that either way is going to be quite a challenge and exciting. And on the other side of that is, I think, the theme of embracing small, understanding that even if AgSTEM goes through, you know, we are still a district that is on balance relatively small. Again, I'll remind us that the AgSTEM program certainly will impact positively the high school, but we still have elementary schools that's still very much part of this district, and they are what they are. So a theme we've been talking about is embracing small and learning how to leverage the situation that we have here at the district. And what that means, I think, as we go through the year, hopefully that'll manifest itself a little bit clearer as we go through. But I know all of us have been talking about it. It's the obvious thing, and I'd ask everybody, as we go through this year, to think about how do we embrace small and take advantage of our size as opposed to seeing it as a handicap. So with that, Pat?
Yes. I'm going to go right to personnel. Beginning of the year, we have appointments. Jacob Bartfield, general music and instructional music at Booth Free. Lori Del Torro, para at WPS. Deanna Diten, front entrance here at Chapag. Jennifer Dorian, general and instructional music, instrumental, excuse me, at Burnham and WPS. Sarah Foreman, a para at WPS. Stephen McCasie, a literacy tutor at Burnham School. And Christine Scott, a .6 English teacher at Chapag. That all of this adds up to really only 2.0 FTEs, just so you know, from last year. Resignations, Amanda Farren, literacy tutor. Autumn Jensen, para professional. Ashley Kirk, music teacher. And Adam Nanavatney, a music teacher. Do have two retirements. We have Lorinda DeSantis, library clerk at Burnham, and Dorothy Smith, ed assistant at Booth Free. We've had a great beginning of the school year. I want to thank the administrators and the custodians and the maintenance and the teachers and central office and the bus drivers and the nurses and everybody who really, every year, comes together for the best, in the best interest of our students. We had a wonderful convocation on Thursday, and I think there was a message of unity, of doing what's right for kids, of always focusing on continuous improvement and to become more gritty. Not only students to be more gritty, but our staff and our administrative team help to persevere, to keep moving forward, to take risks, think outside of the box. We had a wonderful presentation by Kelly White, who was the teacher of the year. I was really so proud of her, and she gave everyone a touchstone. She had little piles of sand with pearls, and she passed them around, reminding everyone to be gritty when you see that pearl and to foster that in students. It was really excellent, and if the chair would like, we may be able to get her to come and give her presentation because she was really wonderful. We followed that with a TEDx, Angela Duckworth on grittiness and the importance of growth mindset. So it was really a wonderful day. Staff came back eager and cheerful. Schools looked great. We had some wonderful professional development on Friday. Project Lead the Way in the K-4 schools, grades five and up. Spent a lot of time on curriculum and planning for science and technology, engineering and math. So I was very proud of everyone, and we're really excited about the Makerspaces. We, today, is always a fun day going into the schools. The sixth grades in their lockers and trying to find things in Chapag is always interesting, but they did a really good job. They really did. And the staff is so wonderful, and the other kids are so wonderful helping them. So that was fun. I went to all of the other schools. Everything went well. Burnham looks fabulous. The work that Don did, we're putting in the door, and the teachers really is a showcase, so I'm excited about that. Next week, our administrative team will go there for our meeting and, you know, give a nice, big cheer of support for the staff there who have really done a yeoman's job this summer. Let me think. I wanted to say one other thing. Let's see. I talked about Project Lead the Way, Makerspaces, Focus on, oh, I know. One of the initiatives this year administratively that Karen Files has led is the Aesop Substitute Teacher Program. We no longer have Darlene, who was a para professional who did it forever, where you call her and she looks for subs. It's now automated. We can certainly have Karen come and show you. She spent a lot of time this summer, really working to make sure that the administrators know how to use it, that the teachers know how to use it, and that all of the information was inputted correctly with the help of central office staff. So Karen has started to take more of a role in the substitute teachers, the handbook, and helping up with, helping us with human services because that's an area we don't have anyone. So it's really, everybody does a little part. So that's really all about the first day of school. We're excited. You know, it's always an exciting beginning of the year. Ice cream socials are coming up. PTOs are coming up. Open houses are coming up. I encourage you to go to the open houses, hear what the teachers have to say, hear what the administrators have to say. Last week, we had a district PTO meeting at WPS. We provided babysitting and pizza. We had a nice, big group, and we were able to plan for the year. So things are good. And that's my report.
Thank you. Committee reports. So, Julie?
I just wondered, under correspondence, if we were going to cover the letter that came in from the library staff, or is that, are we not covering that tonight?
Regarding the clerk?
Yeah, there was, I assume that would cover, go under correspondence, but perhaps not.
We could, we could just mention the letter, but I think on the subject matter, the board's not in a position to discuss that. And I think if we need to, if it's still an open item by the next board meeting, we should put it on as an item.
Okay.
For discussion. So I don't know if you.
Well, I will add that the library clerks that we currently have, led by Joan Temple at the high school, did submit a letter asking about the position at Burnham School. As you see, under retirement, Lorinda DeSantis, who was the library clerk at Burnham School, retired in August. And after discussions with Kathy, it was my recommendation that we do not post that position for a couple of reasons. Number one, equity across the district. Number two, I believe that the booth-free clerk can service both schools, like we've done in the past with technology and other staff members. And it was an opportunity for the board to save about $32,000 a year because that's her salary with all of the additions from Bob's office. And it would be an opportunity to save that money without having to lay someone off. And in this fiscal environment, that was my recommendation to the board. And whatever the board decides, you know, we will do, but that was my recommendation.
Right. So the information has been coming in. It's not complete yet, which is why I recommended that, I don't believe the board's in a position to have a discussion yet. We should be soon because I think it's something that we ought to bring to a conclusion soon, especially since the school year started today. So if it's still open, then we put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Greg, building? Or do you want to defer because of the agenda item on the building committee and just go to facilities while you've got the floor?
Yeah, I will, I'll pass on building. I will, I will pass on building until we reach the agenda item and go on to facilities. Obviously, the facilities committee hasn't met because it's the summer. However, that does not mean that facilities has not been busy. And I want to give you a brief report, I'll keep it as short as I can, on some of the work that, that has been done on, to our, our structures over the, over the summer. Don O'Leary and his, his team have been incredibly busy, and he put together this, this list for me to let me know what they'd been up to. There was at least a dozen or 15 things done at Washington Primary School, including installing paddle fans in the remaining three rooms on the second level. We, we did, we replaced some concrete stairs at the rear of the building. We added a 125-foot concrete sidewalk along the gym. We painted block stairwells. We ordered doors to replace outdated and worn equipment. We wired to add security cameras to be installed the week of 9/3. We've replaced roofing over the gym canopy, trimmed trees, added mulch to the playground, exterior colored panels, cleaned and tuned heating equipment, repaired the reach area fencing, and quite a number of other projects that went on in Washington Primary. Booth Free School, we repaired gym equipment. We replaced and added concrete sidewalks and stairs around the school, added a new second boiler to the boiler room, two electric hot water heaters, cleaned and ordered a motor for the gym heating unit repairs, added wiring for additional security cameras, pump mortar behind the elevator shaft, replaced doors, painted various rooms, and cleaned and tuned heating equipment and did some tree work and replaced, repaired ballast that were worn in the lighting in the gym and throughout the school. At Burnham School, we, we searched for, and it was a bit of a search, and ordered brick for the entrance stairs, brick replacement, so we can finally get that issue put to bed. I know it's been something that's needed to be done for some time, but we did find the brick we need, and that project can go forward. We repaired gym equipment. We painted various rooms, repaired the exterior bell, added new LED lighting in the upstairs class hallway. The LED lighting that we've been adding to schools reduces our electric costs and reduces our energy profile. We've reduced our electric costs significantly here at Chapag with a lot of the LED lighting, which is not in this room, but it's in the mall and the hallways. We've, we've added some, ordered doors to replace the outdated and worn door equipment. We've added wiring again for security here. This is an important item in all of our schools. We repaired the entrance ladder and roofing modification to allow for safe attic entry. Again, tree work, heating work, exterior colored panels added and repaired ballast on the lighting throughout the school. So again, a lot of work done there. At Chapag, we've, we've repaired gym equipment. We are replacing and commenced the replacement, what we needed to do to replace the 10,000-gallon water tank that services, provides the water for this building, and that, that will be completed the week of September 3rd. We've, we've been working with a contract engineer to develop a replacement for the, for some equipment related to the pool. We've repaired fire alarms. We've replaced underwater pool lights with LED lights. We've disassembled, repaired, and reassembled the pool water heater. We've cleaned the pool deck, purchased some ride-on carpet extracting equipment, and cleaned all the carpets. Painted various rooms, added exterior panels, added water supply and waste lines for moving the washer dryer to the old home, to the old home ec area. And we've begun the installation of a soccer scoreboard, including 650 feet trenching for power, adding a transformer pad, et cetera. Again, we're dealing with tree work, heating equipment, replacing outdated, worn equipment and ballast. At the central offices, we've replaced the old entrance to the basement with new siding, roofing, and doorway, and replaced a worn-out air conditioning condenser with a new unit. In short, excuse me, we have continued to pace the maintenance of our buildings to keep them in good order and repair. This is what facilities does. This is what our system has done, and it's, and because we've done good work there and on our septic system, one of the good news things on the building report is we expect our cost for dealing with the septic system to be substantially less than we had anticipated, primarily because it's overdesigned for the space and also because we have kept it in good order and repair. And that's why this work is critical, and that's why we need to do it. Sorry for the long report.
I think we would have appreciated continued long reports of this, this type. It's quite an ambitious list. Thank you, Don.
When you get your vacation.
Yeah.
That's a busy summer.
What I did last summer.
Yeah.
A short story by Don. Very good. Please, John.
Jeff, question. There you go.
Anyone have an idea of the grand total for all these repairs and installations?
It's somewhere in probably $200,000 or $300,000.
Don, this was money that had been budgeted. It was in the budget for this work to be done. Part of that is in the budget? Okay, thank you.
Oh, all of it.
All of it?
Okay.
Okay, John? All right. Curriculum, Michael?
So Teresa DeBrito and I just met, actually, with Anthony before this meeting, and once over the summer, as you all know, unless you're new to the board, the, the education committee is unique in that technically every single member of the Board of Education is on the committee. So I really see my role as more of a facilitator, working kind of with the administration as a liaison between the administration and their plans and what they think are a priority as far as information that they would like to get to us in terms of what's happening in the schools, but also from our direction, communicating questions that we might have that might make for future topics that they could present to us on. So to that end, I'd encourage anybody on the board, if there's something going on in our schools that you have a question about, certainly let me know if you think that that might make for a good agenda item for the future. As you can see, if you look on the future meetings for September, we've already got an education meeting slotted for the 25th. On that one, we, we do have a topic. It's traditionally the, the meeting that we, Teresa's going to be presenting the, the data from the CMTs and the CAPT standardized tests to the board. So that one's taken already, but we have many other future slots available. So again, if anybody has any ideas, things that you'd like to learn more about, I'd encourage you to let us know. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, I know I skipped over Ad-Advance, but Annette's thrown up, is there anything you wanted to say about Ad-Advance before you go into Facilities?
About finance? I don't know what you want me to say. I'm not going to talk about Facilities.
No, I said finance.
Okay. Well, for Ad-Advance, I think you said Facilities.
Oh, that's okay.
It's okay. So for Ad-Advance, I just wanted to mention, we all got an email over the summer, but it was summer, so we may not have noted it, but on October 5th, from 4 to 6, Ad-Advance is having their first, what they're calling an open annual meeting, and everyone is invited to attend, all superintendents and all board members of the districts that they represent. And I would encourage people to attend if, if you can. It's, it's a, I always feel that I have a hard time explaining all of the things, the services that they offer and do for our, our districts, and so coming to that annual meeting might be enlightening, and I believe they said that they would be serving light refreshments, so. So it's from 4 to 6, and I hope to attend, although I think there's a game that day, so I'm not sure.
The first you said?
October 5th.
Okay.
Yep, October 5th. And Pat sent us all an email, let's see, August 14th. I can resend it, but I just thought I would remind everyone of that. Finance? Okay, so finance, like, that's the next one. All right, we are scheduled to meet for the first time on September 11th. However, I would like to move that meeting because Bob will be out of town, and I think it's important that we meet this month, and since we have some new committee members, I think it would be nice to, to have a nice extended meeting to really look at what the committee does and go over the format for the, for the accounts so that everyone has a good, clear understanding of that. So I was going to propose that we finance meet on Monday, September 18th. And if that doesn't work for people, then we can try to find another time, but I just didn't want to wait until October 2nd, and I think it's important that Bob is there. So that's all I have for.
Yeah, so since we're talking about the agenda, I'll move what was going to be at the end up to now, since Michelle, if we can, talk, the 18th, and I'll sort it back to it again if we have to.
Yeah, yeah.
Per the agenda. But we had a board retreat scheduled on the 18th, so I'm going to yield that time to Michelle for the finance committee, and we're going to, so we're not going to have a retreat in the month of September. We're going to, we're going to look towards the retreat for the fall. I believe there's one scheduled in October.
I think it's the 20.
Right. So, so there's no retreat on the 18th, and Michelle is going to take that time slot for the facility, for the finance committee.
October 23rd is the retreat.
Is the retreat, right. But, thank you.
What time would you be doing that?
Either 6:00 or 7:00. I will see, I will, I'll poll the committee because I'd like, I'm hoping that everyone will be able to attend, but since I just sprung this on them, I'll just, I'll send everyone an email.
Okay, great.
All right.
Okay.
And I'll let you know, so we can post that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ellen?
Yeah, I have to get together and figure out with my committee, plan our meetings. We.
Have to plan our meetings for the year. What we've done for the last year is to have longer meetings every two months on off days since it's just gotten too difficult to schedule everybody for Mondays and haven't done that yet. Once again, we are kind of in limbo before AgSTEM is decided and before other things happen to us this fall, although we are, we were going to get, I think we had to cancel in the spring, but we were going to get a report from Ms. DeBrito on the IB questions that we had from the previous meeting, which I think is way back in March. So we might schedule that first, and then we'll see from there where we go as far as what we can actually invest our time in before all of these questions are answered later in the fall.
Greg, negotiations?
Well, as you know, we have completed our negotiation with the groups to agree to mediate. I'm not the only one. As you know, we have completed our negotiation with the union representing the nurses. We have, in mediation, reached an agreement, and that, I believe, is on the agenda for ratification this evening. Contract has been drafted, and it's been, I believe, ratified by the Nurses Union and signed by them. And so we're at the position now of, of making a ratification decision. We'll discuss it in executive session and make our decision in open session.
Thank you. And, Michelle, back to you again for policy.
Policy did not meet over the summer, which is kind of nice. First summer we've taken off, I think, in a while. We do have two policies on the agenda tonight, and we have our first meeting of the year, September 25th, and Teresa and I will be meeting this month to get that, to get back on track for the year, so things, I think we're in pretty good shape, though.
That's good. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, on to new business and updates. Pat, you have something to say about enrollment?
Enrollment? Debbie will pass it around.
Bob's out of town. Yep, so we'll cross that one off.
I am pleased, I am pleased to let the board know that our reduction of tuition has brought in a lot of extra students, so that's, that's something to be very happy about. So you have in front of you, the enrollment in Burnham is 47, with the highlight of kindergarten being 16 students, which is wonderful. Booth Free has 70 students. Washington Primary has 146. The middle school has 159. The high school has 262, which is a total of 421. Last year, we had a total of 706 students. This year, we currently have 684, which is a reduction of 22 students. In the district, our students are 611. That's the total, 611. So we have 73 students who are non-residents. So you have 11 who are staff. You have 27 from Sherman, and you have 35 who are tuitioning in. With the tuitioning in, just to, if you see, I'm in the middle, tuitioned non-residents. It's under the other category, so there's seven in kindergarten.
has brought in a lot of extra students. So that's something to be very happy about. So you have in front of you, the enrollment in Burnham is 47, with the highlight of kindergarten being 16 students, which is wonderful. Booth Free has 70 students. Washington Primary has 146. The middle school has 159. The high school has 262, which is a total of 421. Last year, we had a total of 706 students. This year, we currently have 684, which is a reduction of 22 students. In the district, our students are 611. That's the total, 611. So we have 73 students who are non-residents. So you have 11 who are staff. You have 27 from Sherman, and you have 35 who are tuitioning in. With the tuitioning in, just to, if you see, I'm in the middle, tuitioned non-residents. It's under the other category. So there's seven in kindergarten at Burnham, one first grader, and three third graders for 11 tuitioning kids at Burnham. There is one kindergarten student at Booth Free, two in third grade. So that's a total of three. In WPS, there's one in pre-K and one in fifth grade, for a total of two. In Chapag, there are 14 in the middle school and five at the high school, for a total of 19. So that is as of today. Yes?
Just a quick question. How many of those came after the reduction versus before? Do you have any idea? Like, how much of an impact did that have? Is it?
I can tell you that in Burnham, because that's the one we were kind of following, the kindergarten had three before the reduction and four after. But other than that, I really don't know. I can, well, I could tell you this also. If you go, last year, maybe this will help. Last year, we had 12 staff students. This year, we have 11. Last year, we had 24 Sherman students. This year, we have 27. Last year, we had 11 tuitioning in students. This year, we have 35. So we went from 47 last year to 73 this year. Yeah, absolutely.
Michael, sorry.
No, I'm watching the numbers.
Pat, I'm just looking at the declines. And in most cases, it's a single student here and there, and that can always occur. You know, for example, if you're looking at Burnham, the first grade, there was one student, I believe, who left. So we went from four to three. And that happens, I would imagine, in any district at any grade level. People move, jobs change, things like that. If you're looking at the more significant declines, you know, for example, the fifth grade at Burnham, three students less. And for particularly such a small school already, that that kind of decline is concerning. I'm wondering, did you have any kind of exit interviews with the parents of the children that are no longer there, or is that?
We always, when they discharge from our district, we always give them a survey that they fill out, and they return it if they want to. I can have Debbie look, and I can get back to you. As far as the fifth grade at Burnham, off the top of my head, I know one girl went to Bermuda or the Bahamas with her family.
Right.
The other two, off the top of my head, I honestly don't know, but I can look into.
Okay, thank you. The only other one that was significant, if you're looking, is, I guess, at Reach.
Right.
12 students less than the previous year.
Yeah, I, you know, what happens, it's cyclical with kindergarten, too. You know, sometimes parents will keep them an extra year, want them to go another year. I think when we did get, I know that Burnham got a large group of kids from Reach this year to go to Burnham. So that was, you know, a boost for them, where last year they didn't. So, you know, it's cyclical. There's no real answer for that. But we are, we still have room at Reach and will take in kids. And remember, that tuition is $7,500, okay? That has not changed for out-of-district students.
Michelle?
I was just wondering, the projection column?
Yes.
Was that from last year, or is that from the Prada?
It's from the Prada report.
Okay.
So whatever December, we use -- That's, yeah. It's from the December 2016 report.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
And he takes into account the out-of-district students who are tuitioning in? I forget, how does he?
Bob can answer that better than I.
I know he talks about it.
Yeah, he factors that into his projection for what is known, okay? The Sherman is a little bit cyclical because they can choose other schools besides our own. So he's moving those students up and making an estimate based on the past of what he expects to come in from them. But that one's kind of up in the air. The other is totally, he used what we had, but no one expected that we were going to do what we did in the spring by reducing the tuition. And as far as the staff, it kind of stayed even.
John?
Yes, I had a follow-up on the actual drop in the number of freshmen entering from Sherman from, and I don't know what the 15 represents. Is that, was there any attrition from Sherman from last year to this year?
Well, no. 15 students are now into the 10th grade from Sherman.
Yeah. Did they start at 15?
Very close, when they were ninth grade. We were very close to that number.
But?
This year, we only got two. Now, you know, it's, Sherman's an interesting place because, first of all, we don't have football. And sometimes you have a large class that's very athletic, and they want to play football, and they're very heavy into more competitive sports. Not that we're not competitive, but some of the bigger schools are competitive. We do exactly what we did last year this year. I mean, we did a great recruitment. We went there with Todd Dyer. We had the kids come here. They were swimming in our pool. They loved it, but this year, we only got two. So it's, you know, and then the other thing is Sherman has a declining enrollment also.
Right.
So that's also going to impact.
Do we know it's two out of how many? Do we know?
I do not know, but I can look into it.
Roughly, it's two out of how many were at Sherman?
38.
38? Any other questions? Thank you. All right, Michelle?
All right, so we all know, or I think most of us know, that Bob is retiring after many years of service to our district, which we greatly appreciate. And he is staying on, working a variable schedule, three days, give or take. Until, well, yeah, you had that big report. Until we find someone. We did post the job opening first week of August. It appeared in CTREAP, CEA, CASBO, Monster, ZipRecruiter, and LinkedIn. So it was out to the regular places for education and then some broader searches. We have received some applications, and we're reviewing them. And the committee will be interviewing as appropriate. So we're moving forward with that. And hopefully, in the next couple of meetings, I'll have some more information to report back. Yep? Jim? Oh, the interviewing committee is not completely set, but it's probably going to be the executive committee of the Board. I haven't actually spoken with everyone. This is just sort of what we were assuming. And kind of hoping Julie would consider helping out, since she's got the HR background. And I've reached out to Jay Hubblebank, who was a previous business manager and a chair of the Region 12 Board. So I don't know that he'll agree to do that. So we're, that's in progress. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And we actually haven't gone through the whole process. I've been reading through the CASBO. It's like a novel, by the way. It's a packet this thick on how, okay, it's not, it's fall asleep reading. But I have read through most of it, sort of, not all of it. But it didn't exactly go through the process. It just said interview. But I kind of assume that once the committee has done some of the initial work, you know, that we would probably come back to the Board before we offer a contract. I mean, we'd have to talk about a contract anyway. Yeah, so. So I will keep the Board informed of that. You're welcome.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next item, an update on the agri-science program. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Pat.
Yeah. I'm going to start, and then I'm going to ask for the first part. We're doing this in three parts tonight. We're doing the project status, the program status, and the financial status. I just wrote down some thoughts about the project status. I thought I would convey them and then ask Mr. Kava, Greg, if he would like to add anything that I may have missed. So basically, as far as the project status go, we are in the design and development phase. The consultant has been working with the administration, our architects, to ensure that the design meets the curriculum and pathway requirements that Theresa will talk about tonight. We are waiting for the next building committee on 9/11 so that the consultant can come and meet with the KBNA and ONG and share the design info with the building committee for approval. As for the septic and traffic studies, it's in the process with the state agencies and contracted engineers. So I know that's not in-depth, but it kind of gives you an idea where we are.
You want to take questions as we go, or?
Well, I don't know if Greg wants to add stuff to that, information to that.
I'd like to say that we are.
I'd like to say that we are quite a bit of the way through the schematic design process, but it's not complete. The primary reason it's not complete is because we needed to bring onboard the educational consultants that would give us some guidance on some of the new standards that have come out. And exactly what space, we need to be sure of exactly what space we need to teach what we're going to be teaching as this program develops. And so those consultants were brought onboard. They have provided a bit of their, a good bit of their input that's still a work in progress, as far as I can understand. And I believe the idea is that they will have completed their input by 9/11, and we'll know what changes to the project are going to be made. Once those changes are incorporated and the schematic design is complete, we would then go to the next stage, which would be the construction document stage. So because of the time it took to locate, bring onboard, and get up to speed, these consultants, we're a little bit behind where we'd like to be in terms of time, but we're also behind in terms of spending. So this has afforded us the ability to hedge a little bit our bets in terms of spending while we get that work done. Of course, it's also cost us more money because we had to pay to hire these people to bring them onboard. But overall, that's where the project, that's where the project is. And the, once we complete this stage schematic design and the next stage construction documents, we will be at the point, hopefully with funding, where the project can be put out to bid. And when, and once the project is bid, the construction manager will know what it's going to cost to build and will give us the construction number. And then the construction manager is responsible to meet that construction number. You know, absent some minor things that could go wrong on-site, but pretty much the construction manager's responsible for the number. And that's the way the process works, and that's where we are.
Greg, just a clarification. You said schematic design as opposed to design development. Did you mean design development? So I thought the schematic design was, phase was done. And K&amp;B was being paced, or design development was being paced by K2.
I think you are correct. I think I misspoke when I said schematic design. I meant to say design development. I'm sorry about that.
Just want to be, just want to be clear. I'm sorry, was there another question?
I'm going to go to the podium, if that's okay.
Of course.
Okay. And I'm going to hand these out just to the Board right now. And we do have for the public, so you can hand it to the public. Okay, I'm going to present on the financials. And Bob will interject when I say the wrong thing. But hopefully, I won't. Okay. If I stand here, am I good, Colin? Okay. Okay, so Bob and I tried to answer some of Anthony's questions that I know the Board has had about the project, to kind of get a pinpoint and a stake in the ground as far as where we are with the project. So we have a little PowerPoint. The big information, the big numbers, is this. As of, this is 8/8, this is as of August 8th. We have, the Board has approved $1,756,439.44 for the project. The payments that have been approved are $706,679.44. So right now, there is a balance that has been unspent at this time of $1,49,760, okay? And that slide is the same as the last slide. We'll come back to it. So, I know you can't see this, and I'm going to go look closer. You have in your packets, two pages, one and two. See, it says number one and number two? These are the handouts that we will give you. And this is the format that we will use from now on every time we present to the building committee and to the Board of Education. So hopefully, you'll be able to line it up with last meeting, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Now, basically, what this is, I'm not going to go through the whole thing right now because I want to go through the, and then I'll just answer questions. You've gotten this in your packet. This talks about here, what, oh, good, sorry. It's not my area of expertise. Oh, here we go. Here is the pre-referendum number. Ah, come on. Do I not have a, I had it a second ago. Okay. I'm going to go and put my finger on the thing. Let me see. All right, here we go. Maybe I was too close. Here, right here, $247,229. I'm not going to do the cents, okay? Is what was paid for the pre-referendum costs. This column here is all of the authorized money that has been set, authorized as we've gone along. Here, this column gives you the program description of the services. This is the science lab portion. This is the agri-science portion. This is the total construction portion. And this is the equipment grant. This is all the projects. This is the balance of the authorized amount remaining. So this is what is remaining, and this is the percentage. Okay? Now, this continues on the next page. You all have it in front of you, so you'll be able to see it. Same thing. This is the authorized money. Now, if you come all the way down here, you see what this number says? It's the number I just told you. It's the same number. Are we all agree with that? Okay, good. If you come here, all projects, this is so hard. I have the worst eyes, I want you to know, but I'm trying. I believe it says right here, $706,679. Is that correct? Okay. That was the second line that I showed you on the first slide. And then you have right here, the remaining. Yes? Okay. And right here, we have about 60% of the money left that you have authorized for us to pay. Okay? The building committee has already seen this. You already have seen this. We have all of the receipts, all of the invoices, everything to back up all of this information. Okay? So now I'm going to go to the next thing. Now, Chairman asked us to look at the two handouts that were given earlier this year. This one was given in February 6th, 2017. Okay? The total was $1,317,000. This one was given out on July 8th, and the total was $1,317,000. This one was given out on July 8th, and the total was $1,811,789. So the question is, why are the numbers changing? Well, the first piece of that is different quest, because it's a different point in time, different things have been asked and different things have been answered. But basically, what Bob and I did, and this was just information that Anthony kind of put there, which I'm going to also show you in another format. Okay? So what Bob and I did was we reconciled the numbers from February to equal August and from July to equal August. Okay? So that's the next page. The July numbers. Now I'm going to go back, right here. The July number, right here. Okay. Why is it different than August? It's different than August because three things. And again, if you want to see this in detail, we will go over it with the building committee, but I think this gives you a big idea how it all equates and gets reconciled. We had to take away the design development, $55,000. We had to take away $2,600 from design development for ONG. The first one was KBNA. And then we had to add $2,250 for AccuMark utility. When you do that, you get the same number, and we have reconciled. Now we have July. Is this July? No, is this the same one? Let me just make sure. Was that February, July I just did? Oh, okay, here. So here I'm showing you again, July, right here. This was given out in July. People were saying, I don't understand why it says $1,811,000 when in August you said it's now 17 and change. Now we go to February. Now, February is a long time ago in this project. So February started with, oh, the cost of, if you could see it right here, $1,317,000. This was handed out to the Board of Education. And I believe this is what was discussed a meeting or two ago about what did we actually approve that evening on February 6th in the motion that said, let's get to the construction documents, but didn't have a number. Okay? So now I'll go back here. So in February, I'm, oh, sorry. I'm starting with the $1,317,000. I am adding in the pre-referendum costs. I am adding in the $109,960 that you approved. When was that approved, Bob?
June 27th.
June 27th. The consultant's in there. Okay? I am adding in the AccuMark utility. I am adding in schematic design. And why am I adding that in? Because between February and August, there was a discrepancy. This was, the February number was $20,000 less than the August number. That's why I'm adding it in. So I'm adding in schematic design, $20,000. I'm adding in design development, $120,000. I am taking away $20,000 in construction documents, and I'm taking away $40,000 in approval bidding, and voila, you again have the same number. So again, this is the status of the project. You have approved, at this point, $1,756,439. The payments that you have approved are $706,679. You have a balance right now of $1,49,760. And if you go back to this sheet, bless you, it'll tell you what that money is going to be spent on. You go through all of this, and it tells you what the money's going to be spent on. So with that said, I will answer questions if I can. If not, Bob will help me.
You could, yeah.
So if the state makes a decision in next month and says, where it's not spending $500 million in bonding, we're spending $300 million and we're one of the projects that doesn't get funded, what does that mean? Does that mean that...
That means that right now we've spent $706,000 and that we would go and make a legal argument that they owe us at least 80% of that money to make us whole.
Okay, now, but what it means also is that we haven't done the work, which would commit us to pay the other million, $1,490,000. So in other words, up to this date, if the project doesn't get approved by the state or whenever they make that decision, at that time, whatever we haven't approved...
Would not be spent.
Would not be spent, okay.
Right. Michelle?
I have two questions. One, I guess, just because it's sort of following up on Pete's, because I know a little while back, there was a significant lag time between work done and actually billing. Do we have a sense of, of how far beyond the $706 that's been paid has been done but not billed for?
Walk in the...
What would probably happen, Michelle, given where we are today, you would end up probably spending, if you look on the extreme right-hand column of the two-page handout...
Okay.
And you come down and you'll see a number of $128,000. My guess is by the time the state, if in fact they ever get to do a budget, we would be at that point when we might get some response. We may have finished that work up to the 128.
Okay.
And we may in fact finish the 51-8 on page two, which is, runs in tandem with that. Okay? And Bob? It's ONG's work in tandem with getting down to that point before the construction documents get put together.
And the $109,000 as well, right? Could add to that list?
We, that's on the second page.
Yeah.
Okay, and then on the rest of the second page, most of these things would probably by that point be, have been completed. I don't know where they stand today, but my best guess would be that it would also include that 109. And that's just a guess on my part, and, because these contracts, as you finish a phase, you, you, you'll cross it off as 100% zero to be paid. That's the best guess at this point. No one knows where the state budget is.
That's roughly, what, about another $290,000?
It's 160 and...
130.
128. So 220, 288 or so.
Okay. So Pete, to make sure, Peter, the answer to your question is, at the moment where it, make sure I'm tracking here, our expenditures to date is 706.7, right? If by the time Hartford makes a decision, you could probably add another roughly 290, so let's say 300 for round numbers. So you're talking about $1 million worth of expensed money by the time Hartford, I won't even put a timestamp on that...
I wouldn't either.
Because that could be 30 days from now, but...
Tomorrow.
Or tomorrow, but...
No.
Well, if it's tomorrow, it's 706. If it's 30 days from now, it's going to be a lot closer to a million than it will be 706, right? And none of us are smart enough to figure out when Hartford is going to come to their senses about, about the budget and get us all going, right? But to be clear, I just want to, Pat, the comment you made to, to Peter's question, I just want to make sure we're clear on this, is you said we would, will make a legal argument to put a claim in for reimbursement should the state not approve the project. But that, that is just that, a claim, correct?
Oh, absolutely. They, they do not have to pay, but, you know, we would fight for them to make us whole. Bob testified to that, the legislature, that, you know, they have been moving us along. They, we've met with DAS, they know we're spending money, they've encouraged us to spend money, we have letters from Melody Curry that tells us to continue. So yes, but it would be my recommendation that if this did fall through and I, that the board then get some legal advice on whether or not to ask the state to make them whole, pay the 80%.
Yeah, but I, just to...
But yeah, not definitely, I'm just, that's my recommendation to the board.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's, we certainly should, at the very least, ask.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And I'm not saying, you know, the grounds, I mean, I think it's certainly a legitimate claim to launch forward, except that, but it's not based on any, on any law, on, on any, anything in terms of that's firm from the state that says that we're going to be reimbursed. I think it's just important that we don't leave this room or have the misperception leave this room that no matter what, we're going to be reimbursed 80% on that money. That's the point I just wanted to make. John? I'm sorry, Bob, did you have something?
No, after he's, maybe this will tie the thing together, go ahead.
Okay.
I have two correspondence from Costas Diamantis at DAS concerning reimbursement. Reimbursement only occurs, this is Costas quote directly, "only occurs on projects when both grant commitment and plan approval is received. While in certain scenarios, in the past, districts proceeded forward without grant commitment, it is always at their peril and are informed of that in writing and orally. We cannot reimburse that which is not authorized." Note, in a situation where grant commitment is delayed even by a year and later authorized, we will reach back for those costs. And when our, I think it was, I don't know if Greg was there, but when the, when they met with DAS in Hartford on Wednesday, July 12th, it was noted, and I think maybe Don was there also, Costas Diamantis stated that project costs, design fees, et cetera, will not be reimbursed if the legislature doesn't fund the project. So that's pretty, that's pretty telling and pretty, I mean, if anyone would know, he would.
I, I understand. Julie?
Could we go forward and get a legal opinion prior to, I mean, could we do that now? So at least we'd know if there's precedence, we would know if there's a chance we'll get the money back as opposed to waiting? And the only reason I ask that is because I think we're all under pressure in our communities who are wondering why we're spending all this money without a commitment. If we had a positive precedent or something telling us that there's a good chance we'd get 80% back, that would be quite helpful.
Greg, do you, do you have anything you wanted to just opine here?
Well, look, I, I, I don't know. I mean, Costas may be telling you what their position is. These, these issues become political issues, they become issues as to whether or not the state wants to rethink that position in light of the fact that if they take that position and if districts are injured, then they're going to have a problem getting any necessary school construction projects done in the future. Because people are not going to want to, they're going to tell them, well, I'm sorry, but we're not going to advance. And what ends, going to end up happening is it's going to end up increasing the cost of school projects. Every year you delay a project, you, you can, you can get 2%, 3% increase in construction costs. And when you're talking a project of $30 million, let's just round it up from 29 to 30, you know, I mean, that's a significant amount of money every year that the costs increase as a result of delay. And all this system does, I mean, this is a horrible situation, number one, that they, that they delayed us and then told us to go forward and told us if we didn't go forward, we didn't have a project. If we didn't have a project, I would submit, we've got a major problem in this region as to what we're going to do, because you looked at these, these declining numbers, and you saw despite lowering the tuition, despite strenuous efforts, tremendous efforts on, especially on, by the town of Bridgewater, we still have not really made a dent in anything in terms of attracting people to this region. And this project is the way this region is going to continue. Otherwise, we've got another major problem we're going to have to deal with. And so for a lot of reasons, let's assume we don't get a penny back from the state. You're talking about putting out a million dollars to try to solve a problem. Some part of that million dollars is going to actually be used because we're going to have to fix these science labs if we expect the school to remain open and able to teach science. So some part of it, we're going to have to spend anyway, so we haven't, that isn't gone. But look, it, it, it's not an enviable situation the state has put us in. It's not an enviable situation to be bullied by state agencies to press forward on something and then come out and say, well, of course, you know, we're not going to help you if, you know, if, if you, it's the animal house defense. You screwed up, you trusted us. And, and that's exactly the, the situation that they would put themselves in. So I don't believe that they're going to do that, but if they do do that, and if they don't fund this project, I'm not sure what else we could have done at this point. And, you know, that, that's the difficult thing, is we, we came up with an elegant solution to solve, to at least ameliorate our long-term population trends. We've moved in that direction. We've tried to do it. There are risks in life, and there are risks with not doing this project. Significant risks. And so we made a cost-benefit decision that this was the best risk to take.
So Julie, answer your question. I, I think we're all in uncharted territory regarding this, I think it's obvious. But I will reach out to the board's counsel and ask the question and get back to the board with the answer, but I suspect, I think I know what the answer's going to be, is there's no precedent here to give us any guidance, but I'll ask. Michelle, you had your hand up next.
I had a question about the numbers, but the only comment I wanted to add to all that, which Bob reminded me of the other day, is that there are quite a few other school districts who'd be in the same boat as us. So, you know, if the, if we worked together to make our case to the state at least.
Clearly, we won't be alone.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so, just, just...
Yes, that's a good point.
Break the numbers.
That's a very good point.
So the questions I wanted to ask back to the, they came in two places, but maybe the easiest place to see it is under summary of expenditures, page eight. It was just the, the changes, AccuMark utility, schematic design, these were the, sort of the ups and downs, the variances between... Yep. Uh, wait, yes. So, so the, so the...
February to August.
Right. So the 247 was pre, the 109 was the special meeting, I get that. So these other changes, the next one, two, three, four, five, I'm just wondering, maybe we had a meeting about it, remind me, or did the building committee, or the contract changed, or they went over, like, what, what are those changes? Do you know?
The changes primarily were in direction of the cash flow. There's a couple pieces, there's 20 was up, 20 was down. It was just how it was put together. There was an issue of trying to lower some of the costs in that contract and where it shook out. And it clearly is what the contract calls for that was approved. It's just that it, two different questions were asked at two different periods of time. We were going from a point where we had spent some money and it was already done, and then we were looking for the approval for the rest of these things, plus the stuff that happened in June.
So it, for me to explain it now in my way...
That I was going to say, because I don't...
If you look at the February 6th...
You got to go back to the February, you're right.
Okay, spreadsheet. You see how it says down here, $1,317,000?
Yep.
If you compare this spreadsheet to the August spreadsheet, and you go line by line and add up, like, all of this is ONG, $111,000. All of this is Castle Booze, $1,206. But then there are other things that are in the August spreadsheet that are not in this spreadsheet. So in order to reconcile the number, you either had to add here because it was in August, or you had to subtract here because it was more here and less in August. Does that make sense?
I guess so. So this is like a reflection of what was actually happening, but I'm just kind of wondering...
This was in February...
Was it more or less than we had approved or anticipated? Like, this isn't because... Was it more or less than we had approved or anticipated? Like, this isn't because the, the, they went over contract. It just, it's like a timing.
It's, it's a lot of timing.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it was a lot of things that were, for example, the last two items in that list in there dealt with, after the construction documents go out, there's a phase where you get bids in. They had an allowance on that contract to help with the bidding results. And that was about forty thousand dollars. So it was in the early February one, got massaged and moved to that same schedule. And you could see it really in, under the Castle Booze for things that were remaining but not authorized because we didn't include that because you wanted to get down to construction documents. And if you looked at construction documents in total, there was this bidding piece, but we can't go to bid until we get the letter. So we excluded those things.
Okay.
They're still there, but, you know, we're not ready to do anything with them.
So again, layman's terms. In all, in February, we had added forty thousand dollars. That was in the February schedule. In August, we did not because it wasn't time. We weren't ready to go to bid. So we had to go back to February and take out forty thousand dollars. Because we're trying to match it up to the August.
Right. And the forty really translated to thirty-five.
All right.
So it's-
It's a lot of timing issues and a lot of when you ask questions. And I just wanted to jump in for a second. As far as getting, if the state were, for example, to say, we're not going to fund your project, two alternatives always avail themselves. One is you go in and ask for the money. And the second one is what they call a notwithstanding. In other words, you involve your local representatives and they would introduce legislation that would say to the effect, make us whole if they get the votes for us. That's the legislative alternative as well. The notwithstanding language has been used many, that precedent is in there, goes back way into time. They're trying not to do that, but they forced this, the notwithstanding, because they're the ones that were pushing it forward. A much better case for that. The issue is, at this point, what's going to be left of the overall priority list throughout the state? We don't know that. And we won't know that until the governor's budget, or the budget gets passed and the budgeting for the bonding is put in place. We just won't know what that is. We could be in a, a boat with ourselves or we could be with ten other districts. If we, the more the merrier in that case, because then you've got almost a class action at that point.
Thank you. Michael?
Just a question on the science labs. The money that we've spent to date in, in planning for the new science labs, if the state declines to move forward with funding our AgSTEM program, would we be able to salvage any of that money that we've spent? Or is that as much of a waste as any of the other plans would have been?
No, I, I think you can salvage some of that money because we have the plans and the design documents. But, you know, the, the costs of the science labs are in, combined with the cost of the AgSTEM. And I think Chuck from Castle Booze said, when you separate them and just do the science labs, your cost labs, your costs are going to go up at least a quarter, twenty-five percent to thirty percent. So, you know what? And the other thing is that the science labs are a grant also with the state. For us to do the science labs without the, the state, how much? I don't know the exact number, but, you know, Greg, roll hands? I don't remember. We can look it up and get back to you.
I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I believe the difference in, it's about thirty-two and change percent that the state would normally reimburse us as opposed to eighty percent for AgSTEM.
Right. There's a different reimbursement.
If, if the total science lab budget goes from where it is right now, which is something around three million and change, and if it goes up to four million as a result of losing the ability to take advantage of the mobilization the AgSTEM project allows, then my guess is, is that you'll have a state grant of, of around nine hundred thousand dollars that's involved in, it may be a million dollars, actually, million and two, million and three, somewhere in there because it will go up from the nine hundred and change that it is now as a result of the project getting more expensive.
But you're assuming that you're going to get that science grant.
Well, if you get the science grant.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you don't get the AgSTEM, you may not get the science either.
As a reminder, we have two projects, right? They're both independent in, in terms of, on the priority list, right? So one could get approved while the other doesn't, right? So if we, so we have to wait to see how that shakes out. A follow-up question I had about on, on the labs is because we had to reconfigure the program and bring more into the buildings, we, I, I know it influenced how the science labs ultimately came out of that process. Without the AgSTEM program, I would, it's not a question necessarily answer here. I'm not sure the design would necessarily kind of change again, Michael, to, because those labs were actually extending into the library because they needed the square footage, you know, to accommodate some of the AgSTEM curriculum. So without that pressure, would the, would the labs go back to their original footprint? I don't know the answer. I'm not sure anybody here necessarily knows the answer, but it isn't a wholesale. We can take the exact design and just keep moving with it. I think we'd want to ask that question out loud before we just go ahead with the labs. You know, and that might, you know, the answer, the right answer may, may be an incremental cost to, once again, redesign those labs. But it would probably be minor, in my opinion. And if it saved us money, it would be a net benefit. Yes, absolutely. Alan?
Yeah, I'd like to rationalize this a little bit and also, you know, scold a tiny bit. If we look at the amount that we approved in, in February, one, one million, three hundred and seventeen thousand, and we take out the pre-referendum costs, and you can do the math, it turns out that what we've authorized since February has only been another additional one hundred and ninety-two thousand. So considering we think that since February, we have been piling more and more money into this without any more guarantees, at least, even though it looks worse, it's only one hundred and ninety-two thousand compared to what we, what looks like a huge jump. Now, the scolding part is, I think it's, I think it's unfortunate that we didn't factor in the pre-referendum costs in February, that those weren't included and now they are. I mean, it's good that they're now included. And we have, we're, we're doing a running total of all the costs. But there's a little bit of a silver lining for considering those now and a little bit of a, hmm, we had forgotten to mention we'd already spent a quarter of a million dollars when we approved another one point three million in February. But that's all under the bridge. I'm, I'm trying to be positive about this and see that we haven't really gone hog wild since February.
Okay, well, just, okay.
If no one answers the question, I, Michelle, I thought, yep, go ahead.
It's very brief. Let's see, so I'm looking at the first page of, I believe it's the first page of the two-page, you know, the spreadsheet. In the second column, it's at the bottom, remaining not authorized. I'm just, is that not authorized by the board? Or it was authorized by the board but not approved yet by the building committee or not yet?
It's, it's not yet authorized by anyone. It's part of the contract. But it hasn't come, because you only wanted to get to construction.
Oh, so this is, this is, okay, so this is what's remaining on a contract, but we said, hey, no, we're stopping before that.
We're stopping there.
Thank you.
And you have, you still have to do the bid analysis and you still have to do, if, if it goes full, the full amount, there's their oversight on the construction administration.
Okay.
Not authorized at that point, but clearly a part of their contract.
But still needs to be done. Okay, and part of the contract. Thank you. I, I just wanted clarity on the language.
I have two follow-up questions and-
Just, you mentioned two projects. There's actually, at one point, you're going to see a third one, which is this equipment agri-science that's going to come, but after you get the analysis and the work done by the consultants. And that doesn't go into the state until after you get these other pieces done. So it's there. It's part of what the bonding was about. It just, again, you get into a timing issue because you can't put it in until you know what you want to put into it. And it actually follows a slightly different process than the, the other. It's just how the state structures it.
So is that additive then to the agri-science program?
It will, it's just-
Amount?
It's in the bond. It's in everything. You just haven't submitted a grant application at this point.
Okay. So it's inclusive. It's not additive. I got it. I got it. I hope every, does everybody else follow that? Just-
Yeah, we, we just had to allocate a few dollars to it from the pre-referendum to maximize what we could get back.
Okay. So I had two follow-up questions, Pat. The, the approval bidding, the forty thousand that was in the February numbers, is that still a legitimate cost that we should be factoring in?
That's that-
And that's how you're reconciling?
That's the bidding number. Right. That is the bidding number.
So we still need to spend that forty thousand?
Right. It's just when, the question was earlier, that's where it was.
Okay. And then, as a point, the question is something to think about as we go forward. So when we look at each one of the design, at each one of the phases, and you're reconciling answers the question of, of one of, of variance. So we had, for example, in February, the schematic design was going to cost X and we're saying now it's, it's, it's going to cost twenty thousand more than what was originally budgeted in February. The design development, a hundred and twenty thousand more than what we originally thought. However, the construction documents are down twenty, et cetera. So, you know, because if you look at, and I'll hone in on the design development. If you look at that one, when we passed the motion in February, the budget at the time for that, for that work was two hundred K. In August, it went to three seventy-five and now it's down to three twenty. So the delta between three twenty and two hundred is the one twenty that you were showing on the chart. So I, I, my tracking with, with, with numbers. My question is, is more of what's, first of all, what's driving that variance? What's causing that number to go from two hundred to now three twenty?
It was, it was all mine. When I was developing the information back in February, I picked up the wrong set of number. And in my, this is the right number, the three twenty is, I just-
All right. So it's not something coming from Castle Booze that changed what they were going to do? Because again, you could certainly understand the concept redesign. That's by definition, we had to spend that incremental money that we never anticipated. But as Greg would quickly point out, that, you know, we, we spent a little bit of money, but we also were going to save millions by making that investment. So that's the silver lining in having Connecticut ask us to rethink some things, right? So my point then was, as we go forward, I think it's important, assuming the project is a go, that when we look at project costs and budgets, to talk about variance is as important, if not more important, to understand what's driving those numbers to move more so than, you know, the, I'll say, when we're paying our bills, which is important. But to talk about to the board, I think, is to understand what those lovers are, what's driving the variance. Like, we started digging and we ran into ledge, you know? And now we got a blast and we never factored that in. I think that's, that's a material fact that, that drives the numbers. Or we did some process engineering or re-engineering and, and we've now taken forty thousand dollars out of the cost because we got smarter. Those are, I think, important things to reconcile as we see the next look on this. To just make sure our point of reference is, stays here from the beginning and now we're doing variance, right? Against that reference and not trying to move-
No.
Because that's where all of us can easily get wrapped around that axle and, and, and lost in the numbers. As you, I know you appreciate that.
Absolutely. And the, again, points in time lead to different things. But when putting to get together that February number, probably, I was in the midst of trying to put a budget together at the same time. And whatever reason I did it, I did it. And, you know, it is, it is there.
Understood.
But it's, it's, it was the wrong number.
Okay. Any other questions on this piece? Pat, you, you on?
I'm done. Yeah. Now, before Teresa comes up for the next piece, I just want to give you one point of information, of a question that was asked about the direct, what is the person called? Director of the AgSTEM? Is that the, yes. Okay. So the director of the AgSTEM is a person who teaches and also is in charge of the agri-science program when it's up and running, ordering all of the supplies and the equipment, et cetera. They usually teach part-time and they administer part-time. And that position, if we receive the state funding, will be in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen school budget. So that person would start a year before the program opens. Okay? So, and again, that's all based on state funding. Okay? We, I, I want to, just want to say another thing before Teresa speaks also. I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we've done with the AgSTEM. I, I know the state is in bad shape and it's, you know, it's a little crazy out there, but I still feel very confident, not overconfident, because I know anything can happen. But I, I think it's a program that is worthwhile, beneficial to our kids, beneficial to our community, and important. So it's important work. It's exciting work. And I'm very proud of the work that Kim and Lori and Teresa and Don and Bob and myself and Greg and everyone else who's on the committee who have done, because it really, it really is taking shape and it is very exciting. So fingers are still crossed, okay? I don't want people to leave not optimistic. Because I'm still optimistic and I think we all have to be optimistic. We just have to wait for the state. We just have to wait for the state and keep our fingers crossed. So with that said, Teresa is going to review the pathways, which is more of the programmatic information about the agri-science program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hope you all had a nice summer. Happy first day of school. Okay. Okay. So you did receive a packet in preparation for this evening. And I'm passing out one that has some additional aspects to it. But I'm going to go over what I shared with the building committee on August seventh, first. So what you just have also includes that. I just didn't know if you had, had an opportunity to look at it before this evening. Okay, so this is a description of all the pathways. And when you turn into the packet, I do have this introduction because the four pathways are quite rigorous. And so I thought it was important to, in all caps, actually separate specific verbs that speak to what students have to do. And then I provide some samples, and this is direct language from the actual standards. For example, demonstrate how to determine probability and trait inheritance in animals. Analyze how DNA characteristics can detect genetic effects in breeding stock. Devise a strategy to communicate to different audiences. Preventative maintenance and service schedule for equipment, machinery and power units. Construct and repair metal structures and equipment using oxy-acetylene welding equipment. Analyze and interpret hydraulic and pneumatic systems, symbols and diagrams. Propose and implement food processing and distribution practices. Outline procedures to assign quality and yield grades to food products according to industry standards. Examine and respond to consumer concerns about the inspection and harvesting techniques of animals using accurate, excuse me, whoo, need some water already. Using accurate information from regulatory agency-approved techniques. Calculate the amount of fertilizer to be applied based on nutrient recommendation and fertilizer analysis. Interpret laboratory analysis of soil and tissue samples. Contrast pH, pH and cation exchange capacity between mineral soil and soilless growing media. media. Analyze the factors that affect cellular respiration processes and rate in a crop production setting. Devise plans for plant management that applies knowledge of transpiration, translocation, and assimilation on plant growth. Conduct tests associated with seed germination rates, viability, and vigor. So that's just a sampling from the four pathways. So when you turn the page, we go into more detail for each specific pathway. So the first one, Plant Systems, the study of plant life. Students will look at life cycles, classifications, functions, structures, reproduction, media, and nutrients, as well as growth and cultural practices. The study will include crops, turf grass, trees, shrubs, ornamental plants, including physiology, genetics, ecology, distribution, classification, and economic importance. And then you have a bulleted listing of actual standards, specific to plant-growing media, design landscape plans, propagation techniques, the science of managing soil and crop production, the science of plant physiology and energy conversion, environmental factors that impact healthy plant growth, propagate culture and harvest plants, manage, calculate, plan for fertilization. I'm just kind of summarizing as I go through, um, so that you can see the level of detail and involvement that the students will actually participate in. Continuing, greenhouse business practices, plant anatomy, principles of design, safety and appropriate handling of hand tools and equipment, safety with agricultural chemicals, and interpret container labels. So, this little synopsis here really is just some specifics, but there's a sequence to all of these, because all of the freshmen would have exploratory courses. And then as students pick a pathway, they'll have intermediate and high-level courses. So this is just a sampling of all of that, so that you can see, um, how the standards fit in. I also included what we call Tier Three vocabulary, specific terminology that the students have to explicitly understand in order to be successful. And then it continues on the next page, and there are career areas outlined. So that's the first pathway. Did I lose you already? The second pathway, Animal Systems, a study of animal life. Here we're looking at animal life processes, health, nutrition, genetics, management, and processing. So the study of small animals, wildlife, exotic animals, livestock, dairy, horses, and poultry. And again, the sequence of courses will have, um, these particular standards more rigorous as the students continue in that particular pathway. So looking at historic and current trends impacting animal science, breeds, scientific developments, production methods, wildlife populations, laws impacting animal systems, animal husbandry, animal behaviors, animal housing, safety procedures, feed rations, nutritional needs, ethics of feed additives, production methods, breeding, anatomy and physiology, animal healthcare, zoonotic disease prevention, safety with agricultural chemicals, effects of animal agriculture on the environment, management practices, animal system business, record management systems, and laws governing animal industries. And again, underneath that, you have the list of content-specific terminology that the students would be responsible for understanding. The next pathway, Food Products and Processing Systems. Here we're looking at food safety, sanitation, nutrition, biology, microbiology, chemistry, and human behavior. Specifically, the study of food selection, processing for storage, distribution, consumption, and historical and current development of the food industry. And again, you have a listing of standards, from sanitation to equipment that's used, contamination hazards, storage of food, principles of nutrition, chemical and physical properties, wholesome nutritious food supply, food label requirements, food storage and distribution, grades of food products, food safety inspection, quality control, food processing and preservation, measurement of weights and conversions, distribution plans, food industry scope, historical and current, legislation, regulatory agencies, culturally sensitive food, and consumer concerns. And again, you have the vocabulary that aligns with this particular pathway, as well as the career areas. Is that okay, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, she did, we were just looking at you.
I happened to look up. I don't know if you had your hand up for a while, so I apologize.
No, 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 I just, it just occurred to me, I was wondering if you have a sense yet, I know there are requirements by the state because it is a, a...
Yes, he's always lying, yes.
Right, but I don't know how much time or wiggle room there is, I was just thinking, like, this, this whole food, safety and sanitation seems pretty geared towards, like, large-scale, you know, like, the industry, whereas if, if there was a student or an interest in, in a smaller, I know, I know the, the other agri-science programs do farm-to-table events and things like, but if they're thinking more restaurants, like, smaller, is there room for that?
Absolutely. No, no, this is, no, this, so this is not the curriculum, right? Once we hire the teachers, then the actual development of the curriculum takes place. But these are the standards that guide that. So yes, within that, there is tremendous flexibility.
Okay, great.
But I wanted to provide a coherent exposure, so you could see the level...
And it's good to know what the state requires us to do. I don't have a sense of, well, and this takes all the time, or, eh, there's a little, there's, you know, some, some room...
Keep in mind, the students would take multiple courses, right? So everyone's taking exploratory, then they're kind of finding their way, and then they're going to take more involved courses. So not all of this is going to be on an introductory course.
Right, right.
But I didn't want to lessen the sequence and the scope.
Right.
I wanted to kind of provide you with a, a pretty big picture.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah, sure. Um, last pathway, Power Structural and Technical Systems. Agricultural equipment, power systems, alternate fuel sources, and precision technology. So, um, this involves a study of woodworking, metalworking, welding, and project planning for agricultural structures. Specifically, a lot of focus on physical science and engineering principles, energy sources, energy conservation, efficiency of renewable and non-renewable energy, environmental impacts, conversions, safe and efficient mechanical systems, uses of woodworking tools, there are business aspects, cost analysis, safe use of tools, metal fabrication, preventative maintenance, engine specifications, combustion engines, units of electricity, Ohm's Law, electrical control circuit, power, structural, technical, symbols, sketches, structures, drafting software, construction, fencing, plumbing, measurement, geospatial technologies. So quite involved, and then again, you have the listing of the content-specific language that the students would have to, um, completely understand during the courses. So the next page, I wanted to demonstrate to you a commitment to STEM. Of course.
Well, you're looking at me like, no.
Wow, how do I control that if that's what it says?
So, I won't, so the pathways, so there's four pathways that students can take. So how early in the pro, in the program do they declare a pathway?
After the first year. There is exploratory time.
The first year is all just kind of going their way through?
Everyone explores, correct.
And then they pick, then they pick a path?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And these are the pathways that are prescribed by the state?
No, there are more, but remember, there was a, a rightsizing, um, uh, meeting, so then it was broken down to these particular four.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Anthony started on the, uh, the pathways. I noticed for the careers for each of the pathways, only the first one dealing with plants does a farm management, but one would assume that if someone, and there are a lot of different careers, obviously, that these different pathways apply to.
Yeah, this is not an exhaustive list.
Right, and you've listed a great deal of them, but what I thought was interesting about farm management is if you really wanted to do farm management, it would, I would think you would have to do one or two, and then three and four. So I suppose that in a way, eh, is there, is, it's, it's not possible for one student to do a multiple-path curriculum, is it? Because it's just too far, too demanding. So we'd imagine that they would make up the difference in, in undergraduate or with farm experiences themselves. It just struck me that farm management might be several of these paths together.
Right, so, I, I think, keep in mind, something that you said is that, and it alerts me to what I said a few minutes ago about being flexible, right? So I think if there's a student that has that innate desire, if the school can make it work and give them options, I think that will absolutely happen. But you're right, then they're going to further their education, but hypothetically, we're not going to limit.
So in other words, there is room for either, um, what we'd call a directed study or an independent pathway as well, made up of pieces of those, I guess?
I, I guess we'd have to really see with the teachers on staff, how that can work out, so that we would still be in line with the requirements of the program and what that student could achieve in those four years. So I'm...
I know, it's all hypothetical, I was just, you know, interrupting you, basically.
Good thinking, no, no worries, no worries. So the next page, a commitment to STEM. In addition to the pathway standards, AgSTEM curriculum will also include next-generation science standards, engineering by design, and engineering habits of mind. So anytime we write curriculum, there's a, there's a lengthy process of reflection, of research, of best practices, and looking at essential questions, and what are some big ideas. And so I did put together, um, some of these big ideas, the essential understandings, for STEM being a part of the pathways. Engineering is used in the context for exploring science, technology, and mathematics. Engineering drives invention and innovation. The design process illustrates how engineering improves life. Technologies cannot exist without engineering. Engineering is collaborative. Scientific investigation and engineering design are closely related and mutually reinforcing. So you have two images there. On the left, the design process, which is very common to engineers. They determine a problem, they're designing a viable solution, they're potentially building a prototype or testing, they're evaluating, they're presenting results. And on the right, the inquiry-based learning model for science classes. Again, you're asking questions, you might create hypotheses, you investigate, you construct new knowledge, you discuss and reflect on those discoveries, and you're generating new questions, so it's a process that's just continuous. So I thought it was important to show the two, um, representations, and it leads me to the next page. So the STEM Center for Teaching and Learning has nicely put these together, maximizing design and inquiry in the integrative STEM classroom. So we want students to be engaged, really, that's about piquing student interest. We want them to explore, so we want them to construct their own understanding. We want them to explain, to refine what they've learned and what it means. We want them to engineer, to develop greater depth of understanding and to apply it. We want to enrich, so that they can transfer concepts to more complex problems. And we want them to evaluate, this is a diagnostic process. What's what's been learned? What have they learned so far? In addition to that, about ten years ago, the National Academy of Engineering and the National Research Council held a special meeting, and they really talked about what do students in K-12, specifically with a focus on engineering, what do they need? And they came up with these habits of mind, which I thought were critical to include. Sorry with the vocal here, wasn't shouting at all. So the first, systems, thinking, modeling, and analysis. So this equips students to recognize essential interconnections in the technological world and to appreciate that systems may have unexpected effects that cannot be predicted. And so, they can observe behaviors, they can see interconnectedness, so we, we definitely want to foster that type of, um, engineering habit of mind. Creativity, that's inherent in the engineering design process. Optimism reflects the worldview in which possibilities and opportunities can be found in every challenge. Sometimes we get overwhelmed by problems and challenges, well, engineers look for solutions. So I thought that was valuable as well. Collaboration. Engineering is a team sport. Collaboration leverages the perspectives, knowledge, and capabilities of team members to address design challenges. Then communication, which is essential to effective collaboration and to understanding the particular wants and needs of a customer, or to solve a particular problem, and to justify a final design solution. And finally, ethical considerations that draw attention to the impacts of engineering on people and the environment, including possible unintended consequences. So then, the next page, I added samples of next-generation science standards that aligned to what you've heard this evening. So, I just have a few highlighted here. High school life science, structure and function, where students have to construct an explanation based on evidence for how the structure of DNA determines the structure of proteins, which carry out the essential functions of life through the systems of specialized cells. I referenced DNA earlier. Also, high school life science, one point five, energy and matter. Use a model to illustrate how photosynthesis transforms light energy into stored chemical energy. Emphasis is on illustrating inputs and outputs of matter and the transfer and transformation of energy in photosynthesis by plants. Examples of models include diagrams, chemical equations, and conceptual models. High school life science, two point two, scale, proportion, and quantity. Use mathematical representations to support and revise explanations based on evidence about factors affecting biodiversity and populations and ecosystems of different scales. High school life science, three point one, cause and effect. Ask questions to clarify relationships about the role of DNA and chromosomes encoding the instructions for characteristic traits passed from parents to offspring. High school life science, three point three, scale, proportion, and quantity. Apply concepts of statistics and probability to explain the variation and distribution of expressed traits in a population. I think that was actually, yeah, the first example on the first page. Also, high school life science, three point three, oh, I just said that, three point five, cause and effect. Develop, um, two objects interacting through electrical fields to illustrate forces between objects and changes in energy of the objects. Determine what happens when two charges of opposite polarity are near each other. High school engineering, technology, and applications of science, one point three. Evaluate a solution to a complex real-world problem based on prioritized criteria and trade-offs that account for a range of constraints, including cost, safety, reliability, aesthetics, as well as possible social, cultural, and environmental impacts. And the last example here, high school engineering, technology, and applications of science, one point four, systems and systems model. Use a computer simulation to model the impact of proposed solutions to a complex real-world problem, with numerous criterion constraints on interactions within and between systems relevant to the problem. So I hope I've provided for you a comprehensive look at how different standards are interacting and the assurance of STEM in the AgSTEM program. And it's really a very collaborative effort. Dr. Cosentino, just a few minutes ago, really talked about the pride of the work that's been done, and, and I have to say, you know, Kim has definitely been the lead. And I have to say, you know, Kim has definitely been the lead in this and has always been there right from the beginning. And then with these educational consultants, we're all collaborating together. So that's been probably the most beneficial out of all of this. And I'm sure Dr. Cosentino would agree with me, that Kim has definitely done a phenomenal job leading this. I put everybody to sleep, didn't I?
Any other questions?
Sorry.
Pete?
Oh, okay. Well, thank you, Teresa. We appreciate it. You know, when we talked about the AgSTEM program and we said, want to be optimistic, I share in that feeling. And, you know, the program goes, we've talked about creating, you know, the first of its kind.
Right.
Not the twentieth.
This would be, right.
Right, of, in the state. And I think it's a very important mindset that we continue to just keep driving forward and making this program distinguishable.
Right.
You know, and everybody starts to look over and say, I want to do what they did. Because we have a tremendous benefit by having, by building a brand-new building, and Kim knows, right? As opposed to inheriting something that was cutting-edge in 19, fill in the blank.
Right.
And I know you were just a kid. I'll say.
We all were just kids.
It's a very old program. I'll say it before you do. But, you know, we have an opportunity, right? And I think we've embraced it. So I thank you for putting in the work and for Bob clearing up the numbers for us and that we're, we've sort of stabilized in terms of the format we're going to look forward to, so.
Yeah, and this was really necessary because now the educational specs are also guiding what type of equipment, layout, what's really needed, what's the plumbing that's needed, what are the loads that are needed, so that the architects are moving forward.
And that's the work you're doing with T2?
Yes, correct. Correct, yes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, move to our next section of the agenda, and which is the funding to, for the resur surveying of the property here at SBS. So Greg, would you like to explain the background here, please?
Yes, we had.
Press.
We had engaged a surveyor to complete a survey that was started a number of years ago, so we'd have the baseline surveys we needed for our engineers to do the work they have to do on the product, the project, and to produce the information. One of the reasons why a survey is so important is because, as our engineers have told us, is because we are letting contract documents where we're telling them what the universe is and what they need to do, as opposed to where they come out and resurvey the property. So it's very important for us to have a good baseline to work from. What we have discovered is, our engineers have discovered, is that there were some issues with the methodology that had been used in the past on this survey. It had been based on some aerial topography that did not seem to be consistent with what they were finding on the ground. In addition, there were a number of other items that were required in order for them to do their work. And so it was decided that additional surveying work is going to have to be done to get us to where we need to be. The cost of that's, I don't know, we believe it to be around $15,000. And they had a meeting on-site with the surveyor, and they've decided that the project is best served by pursuing this with a different surveying firm. And so we're going to need some additional money for surveying in order to get us where we need to be on this project. This has to be done now, otherwise they simply can't go any further with what they've got. We need to know precisely where the wetlands are, we need to know precisely where, you know, certain elevations are, and we need to have topography that's precise. And so this is something that we're just going to have to move to a higher level, and that's where we are.
Did you say $15,000, but then there's more than $15,000 because of switching companies?
No, that's the additional, that's the additional amount. I believe it's $15,000. Don, do I have that correct?
No.
How much?
$14,950, so call it 15.
So is this?
We won't spend more than $14,950.
Right, but is this, considering we've just been talking about all this funding for the project already, is this absolutely necessary? Is it something that we could fire up as soon as we have a decision from the state?
No, we can't. We need to be there now because the surveying has to be completed in order to have it when we need it, and they need it now, because they need it in terms of they're doing their site plan work, that they're currently moving toward as they finish the redesign and then move on to construction documents. So we really need to have it now, we can't wait. The fact, they would have liked to have had the approval in the early part of the month. But I had determined that it had not been previously authorized by the board for the building committee to spend this money, and that's why I said we have to wait till the board meeting and come back and obtain your approval.
I just wanted to say, I think at least on this one little piece, I know we're concerned about how deep we go into this, but an accurate survey of our property is something we would own and could potentially be useful for any other future project, repairs to the septic, electrical digging, whatever it is, an accurate survey, I think, is certainly something that would probably need to be done at some point in the future, even if it's just to repair the tennis courts or something like that.
Yeah, I'd like to give you some other good news in addition that came along the way, that I'm not sure we've had a board meeting. I can't remember if we had this news prior to the meeting we had. Did I tell you about our findings vis-à-vis the septic situation? Yeah, well, we're in a much better, much better position there, so, but we will, we will need to expend this money in order to move this project along. And you're right, that will be of use to us for anything else we do, to have deadly accurate mapping, surveying, and grades for the site.
So there's no existing survey that we've ever done before that?
We have a survey, it's partially completed, it was, actually, it's been completed to a level, but not the level we need. So we would have to do additional work anyway, and so now I think we're going to just start with different topographies, so we make sure we're completely accurate to what's on the ground.
So it's just a matter where the board has to make a decision. There were some board members who seemed to be apprehensive about spending more money that they didn't know they would have to spend. But whenever you do a project, there are always unforeseen costs that are going to come up. And this, what you're saying, this in essence is part of, you know, what happens when you undertake a project.
Yeah, we expected to do a survey, we knew we would be spending money on the survey, we asked for your approval and obtained your approval to spend a certain amount on the survey, but it's going to be a more expensive survey than we had anticipated. Because we've discovered that things that we thought we knew, we don't know as accurately as we thought, so we need to get additional surveying work done. Actually, $15,000 is pretty modest for a site of this size in terms of getting to that level of what we need.
But usually, when you do any kind of construction project, whatever project, usually run a 10 to 15 percent figure of what you haven't foreseen. When you build a house, you always estimate another 10 to 15 percent.
Well, there's always additional monies. The original contract with the architect indicated there were a bunch of add-ons depending on what we did or whether we needed to go in certain directions, and this is one of those add-ons. We're just spending more than we thought it would originally cost us to get this done, that's all.
So if you don't do this?
We're kind of stuck.
If the board doesn't approve that, you'd be stopping what exactly?
Be stopping the project, because they can't do the design work of the, they can't do the field work without a proper survey to tell them where the grades are. And they won't be able to finish planning, doing the, I'm going to get it wrong again, I'm going to say schematic design, but it's the redesign. They can't get this design work done if they don't know at what grades things come out. For example, one of the things we're talking about doing is creating a septic system for, a separate septic system for the large, the animal building, for the demonstration building, arena, the riding area, that whole building. And we believe it makes more sense economically to do that than to try to pump all of that down, or up really, to the existing septic system. They're going downhill with it, but then they have to pump it up because they can't, they can't get a gravity flow that long distance into it. So they'll end up, they'd end up with having to pump it in. So we believe it'll be, but until we know what the final real grades are, it's impossible to design that system. And we're at the point where we need to be moving in that direction, finishing up that work if we're ever going to get to the construction document phase. We've got to know where our grades are, what our construction is, what we have to build, and how we have to build it before we can actually get to the construction document phase so we can go out and obtain the bids, assuming we're moving forward with the project. I mean, that's a little bit down the line.
So the board doesn't approve this $15,000 expenditure, you'd be dead in the water?
Pretty much. I mean, the survey, the engineer and the engineers and the architects have told us they need to have this survey done post-haste so they can move on to what they need to do. Their goal is to have this process of design finished by the end of September. And they won't be there without the survey. And so it becomes the, it becomes a stumbling block on the critical path. And again, the date we've all got in mind is August of 2019. That's the date we want that building delivered. And we can't get there if we don't have certain milestones reached in the middle, and this is, and this is a, this is a necessary item on the critical path to achieving the milestone of completing this phase of development by the end of September.
So the board has no choice, really? I mean, if that's they want to stop dead in the water?
Yeah, the board, the board needs to approve it, yes, to move forward.
Bob, did you have something?
I'll make a motion that the board approve the expenditure not to exceed $15,000 for the survey.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, could I just ask, what that'd be, it would be to authorize the building committee to expend up not more than $15,000 on the survey. Because the way the process works, the building committee actually authorizes the payments. We act as the agent of the board to authorize that. So if you don't mind that friendly amendment?
I accept that, thanks. Bob, did you have something you wanted to say?
I was just going to, I was just going to point out, the need for this accuracy is because of the cuts and fills, you get some crazy numbers if you don't have accurate surveying done, because they're going to err on the side of.
All right, I think, I think it's a, I agree completely, Bob. I mean, this is one of, this is an area where a mistake now will cost us dearly.
To proceed, they probably need more definitive, you know, data, but if now we need a new surveying firm, so we threw that $5,425 out the window. Who chooses this firm? KB?
We have asked, we're going to go out and, because of the amount of the expenditure, we're, it's greater than the amount that would let us just simply write the check to whoever we chose. We have, we're going to go out and ask for numbers from three people. It's below the amount that we would need in order to have to put it out to bid. But we're going to go, try to get some recommendations from K and B, we're going to look at at least one local surveyor. I mean, I've got a list of 27 items that have to be, that this survey does not provide for, that have to be on there. And so unfortunately, this, the survey we got is not meeting our needs. But we will go out and seek to get some people. I'm going to ask, obviously, we're going to ask K and B to recommend people, we're going to look at people, and we're going to try to find three or four people that can do it and see if any of them can come in with a number that we expect, that K and B has told us we should expect to pay for this. And with any luck, we will, we will find someone that can do it. It's not a perfect situation, I wish it were better, but it is what it is.
All right, so we have a motion, and that's been seconded, to authorize the building committee to expend, not to exceed $15,000 on a surveying firm. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All those abstain? The motion passes. The next item is review and approve for a second reading, policy on recruitment and selection. Michelle?
Yes, this is a policy that was approved for a first reading back in June, so I'm sure it's a little fuzzy, it was a while ago. It is an update required by law based on new laws that have been passed. The one that we are updating is from 1998. It is one paragraph long and does not meet any of the current hiring guidelines. It was approved, I believe unanimously, but Greg had asked Gary for a review for compliance with our contract, and Greg's leaving. Are you staying? Should we go quick? Should we go quick? So, so anyway, so Greg sent this to Gary to make sure that it complied, and I did not receive an email back. I feel like, Greg, you said that you had spoken with him at one of the negotiation meetings that you had, does that sound familiar? And that, you know, he, does it sound familiar?
Yeah, it does.
I remember speaking with him, trying to remember what he said, because it was a long time ago.
It was, I know, I'm sorry. If I remember, because I feel like you told me afterwards that Gary, that he always has something to say, but that the long and short of it was that it was, that it was, there was no conflict with our contracts, but that he blessed me about something.
I believe that that's what he told me, that's my recollection.
Yeah, okay, that was what I thought you told me. I looked back through my email, and I had Teresa look back through hers, and I didn't see a written, I saw the original request, but then I was like, ah, I think he saw him in person. So that's all I have to say. Nothing was changed from the first reading, and there really were no questions except for that one on the first go-around.
Jim?
I move to accept 4111 slash 4211 as policy approved.
Second. Thank you, Michael. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. I'm sorry, I'm confusing you. Raise your hand. All those against? Raise your hand. All those abstain? Raise your hand. Unanimous, the motion passes, thank you.
Oh.
Okay, Michelle, second reading, policy on homeless students.
Yep, so 511, aid homeless students. There are two copies in your packet. John, yes, I think this is the first meeting with policy on it, is that correct? Okay, so the highlights are the new language. So this, so that policy is the, has the highlights are the new language. And if you scroll down to the bottom, you'll see that was the copy for the first reading. So this was also on our, in our June 5 meeting. You'll also see all the legal references that are highlighted. ESSA, which is Every Student Succeeds Act, it's the follow-up to No Child Left Behind, and it's requiring us to update a lot of our policies to meet federal guidelines. So, or laws, I should say, no, they aren't just guidelines. So that was, that was the first reading, and that passed, and nothing was requested for a change for the second reading. Tonight is the second reading. In the packet is the clean copy, so that you can see what it should look, or will look like when it goes online as the new version. And that was, if you scroll to the bottom, that's where you'll see the date for the second reading. This whole policy is about homeless students, we are required to educate homeless students, and that one of the large, or one of the bigger changes was the issue of transportation and, you know, the responsibility to transport students to the school. So that's, that's all I have for that one.
Any questions?
Yes, I move that we approve policy 511, 8.1 as policy of the board.
For a second?
Second.
Question?
I have a question, I don't know.
This directly relates, but do you know the situation in Roxbury, correct? You familiar with what's going on in Roxbury with, what do they call those? What's the word for people who move into a house who? Squatters, yeah.
No, I'm not familiar.
No, me either.
Well, I understand. Well, I understand that squatters have moved into a house, the children are being driven in, not living there, and we're educating them. So I called Roxbury Town Hall, but they didn't have any information. Maybe you could avail yourself, or Pat could call them and find out what's going on, but there's more than one. And I think Greg and I had this discussion at one of our meetings about having to do a certain amount of work at the Roxbury School because of one of these children, and the potential for a very large sum of money which would have to be spent to accommodate this student. So I don't know whether Greg wants to add to that, but somebody needs to get a hold of Roxbury Town Hall, find out what the situation is, what are we obligated when children are being driven in to a house that they have no parents for and that somebody is making money off the whole concept. So I'm giving you an over, a slightly overview, but somebody from this Board of Education or the administration or attorney or somebody has to contact the Roxbury Town Hall and find out exactly what's going on, because it's going to cost us a lot of money.
I have talked to Barbara a little bit about this, and this has been going on for at least a year now. I'm not sure about who's making money off of who. They're squatters, the house is foreclosed, a family has been living there, hasn't left, so you're typical definition of squatters. They do have children, one is a special needs child who is being educated at Booth. I know Barbara is working tirelessly on this situation and working with probably, I don't even know who, probably with the state, but maybe that's something that we could talk to Barbara about, because those are definitely issues that we're spending money on, but it is something she's been working really hard on to try to resolve, so.
I would just say that I guess I'm glad to be aware of the situation, but I'm uncomfortable talking about a student in these terms in such a small community. I know it's our, the role of our administration to determine residency. They know the policy, they know the requirements, the homeless student requirements, so I have faith that they will sort out the residency status and the responsibility of education, but I don't think that conversation belongs here, so. But thank you for letting us know that they're working on something.
Well, I disagree. First of all, my understanding, what I've been told is, one, nobody lives there, that these people are being driven in, that this is a, this is an ongoing practice in the country where people do these things to make money. So someone is, someone is bringing the children in, having them driven in. I was told that from Roxbury Town Hall and other people, no one is actually living in the house. Now, I'm not sure, what I'm asking is, we need to investigate this, because you're talking about a multi-hundred-thousand-dollar problem that we will be faced with if the children have needs that have to be attended to.
I just want to let the board know that we are aware of the situation. We are working in close contact with Barbara Henry and Roxbury, and at this time, I am going to agree with what Michelle said, and we should move on.
Doing our, Pete? I said it's been noted, we'll...
I don't know, I need to get off their rocker and go get to people, or we want to let them take a go. That's all I'm, that's all I'm saying. I know it's a big deal, but I think we have to be honest, because the taxpayers, we said, you build, what we may have to do to the Roxbury School, we kind of, people who are being ordered.
All right, can we move, can we, can we move on? Let's, we have a motion on the, we have a motion on the floor regarding the policy, and I think this might, while it might be topically related to the policy, we should move the policy forward if that's what the board wants. So we have a second on the floor. Any further questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, nay. Any abstain? Passes unanimously. Jim?
I move that the board move into executive session to review and discuss negotiation strategies in consideration of potential settlement for 2017-20 nurses' contract and to review and discuss administrators' contract.
Just a comment before we do that, there's item I, future business notifications. We're just going to move that up to now so we can come out of executive session and the meeting. Pat, I had my comments about the retreat. Did you have anything else that you wanted to add there? For future business coming?
No, I'm good right now.
Okay, all right. Then I move that, we move into executive, well... I mean, excuse me. Let's call the vote. All those in favor of executive session, raise your hand. All those against? All those abstain? Unanimous, we move into executive session at 9:15. Thank you.